Call the meeting to order, all rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Roll call, all members are present except for the one position that hasn't been filled yet.
Okay, the next item that we have on the agenda this evening is the swearing in of Warren Stone as the new mayor and also the swearing in of new council member Heidi Leach. So if you please stand and raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
Aye, Warren Stone.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States and of the state of Minnesota.
Of the United States and of the state of Minnesota.
And the city code of Sauk Center.
And the city code of Sauk Center.
And faithfully discharge the duties of the office.
And faithfully discharge the duties of the office.
And of mayor and of city councilman.
Of mayor.
Of the city of Sauk Center in the county of Stearns.
Of the city of Sauk Center in the county of Stearns.
And the state of Minnesota.
And the state of Minnesota.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. I'll get you to sign these after the meeting, okay?
Thank you. With that, we have the approval of the agenda. We have a revised agenda in front of us. One change is 9B, snow blower replacement. And another addition is 10F in the consent agenda of Resolution 2015-07 authorizing sale of excess property and vehicles. Do we have them, is there any other changes to the agenda?
No.
No? Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
I have a motion from Keith, the second.
Second.
Second from Dave. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion carries four in favor, none against. Approval of the minutes, the December 17th, 2014 regular meeting. You see them in your packet. Are there any changes, corrections, or clarifications that need to be done? Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Motion from Dave, do I have a second?
A second.
Second from Heidi. Anybody see anything else? Okay. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion carries four in favor, none against. Now is our time for the public open forum. Is there anyone here that would like to speak to the council? Is there anyone here that would like to speak to the council? Call a third time, is there anyone here that would like to speak to the council? Seeing none, public open forum is closed. We have no public hearings. We have no reports and presentations. So we will be moving into action items. Resolution 2015-1 declaring vacant position on city council.
With the election of Warren Stone to the mayor position, the remaining balance of his four-year term is vacant. And that would be two more years which should be on, and then that term again would be up for election for four years. So what we're looking for is to fill the remaining two-year term. That is filled by appointment of the city council, and you have a couple options that you can choose to fill that position, and all of which have been used. So there's not one any better than the other. The one option is to appoint immediately from a member that did, was on the ballot. And we had two other council members that ran for office on the ballot, that was Diane Kelly and Mike Olson. You can appoint immediately from an at-large member, if you know somebody that is willing to accept the position and wants to serve. Or you can solicit for future candidates. You know, if you don't know what you really want to do, you know, you can certainly advertise, and we can make an appointment at a future meeting. So I do have a resolution in here where you declare it vacant, and then left a blank line on who that person would be and how you want to fill it. So it's kind of up to the discussion of the city council, what you think would be the best way to fill that position.
Question, if we pass the resolution, we have to do that before we, to declare it vacant, before we appoint someone?
You can have the discussion and then just do one resolution, it's fine.
Basically, we can appoint someone that was one of the next highest vote getters or from the ballot in November, or we could go out, put it out for advertising, see if there's anyone at large that would be interested in it unless someone has approached any of you saying they were interested. The one, I had originally personally looked at going out and seeing if there was anyone else interested to get a larger pool to pick from. The only concern is, is we've got some committees and some boards that are going to be held up on some decisions that need to be made because I think, Vicki, if you, my mind, if I remember right, you said it could be a month, be the beginning of next month before we could...
Well, if we were going to advertise and put it in the paper, it wouldn't hit the paper till next Thursday, so that would give a very short period of time in order to, if you were wanting to appoint at the next meeting. So it's possible it could be a month before you had an appointment.
Okay.
And that just depends on what kind of response we would get.
Okay. Is the council got any preference as to which way they would like to do this, or comments?
My inclination is to appoint from the election results.
Mine as well.
Okay.
You know, I did have a conversation with Diane Kelly, and she is very interested. She's not here tonight because she has the flu, and I asked her not to come.
No, stay away.
So, that's the reason she's not here.
And Diane Kelly was the next highest vote getter with, as far as council. So, my opinion, that would, if that's the way we would go, that would be the person that would, I would recommend to put in my vacant's position.
I guess, my feeling is, you know, she, when, when she applied, or applied, I should say, when she ran for the position, it showed an interest in it. And she is somewhat familiar with how city government works, being on a couple boards, I believe, already. So I, I think we should go that route myself, but I'm just one person, so.
Okay. Any other discussion, comments?
I would agree. I think out of the interest of time and respect for the other boards and committees, I hadn't thought on that angle before, so I think for all of us, save some time and go with the next person that's most interested.
Okay. All right, any other comments or discussion? Not, do I have a motion to approve Resolution 2015-01 declaring vacant council position and appoint Diane Kelly to?
So moved.
My vacant move. I have a motion from Heidi.
Second.
Second from Dave. Any other discussion? Hearing none, call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion carries four in favor, none against.
What if she says no?
Okay, moving on. Resolution 2015-2 adopting rules of order for council meetings.
This is the resolution that, and I did not change the rules of order from last year, they're the same rules that we've been operating on, which basically says when the meetings are, what's the order of the agenda. There is one, one request that I had was, would the council reconsider adding council comments back prior to adjournment? Years ago, we did have council comments on there, a prior council decided to remove it, and now it's been asked, would we consider putting it back on again? It's an opportunity for the city council to bring up, you know, some comment that they want to make. There's a, there's a space to add things to the agenda, at the beginning of the agenda, if there's things you want to discuss during the meeting. This is more of an informal comment period. So if you want to consider doing that. Other than that, it talks about how we make notice meetings and how special meetings are called. So there's not a lot of, it's more of Robert's Rules adoption that we're talking about here, so. But I do have that in Resolution 2015-02. And like I said, if you want to add the council comments, I can amend this resolution. Otherwise, you can pass it as presented.
You said there was somebody who had made a comment to add that back in?
Over the years, we get, it goes back and forth, so every couple years, we reintroduce it. Let's see if the, if the existing council wants to have it.
If the council is making comments that are related to business, we have ways of doing that, because you put it on the agenda. If you're making personal comments, we have a way of doing that too. Do we have a public open forum that any one of us can go down and take the podium? It seems redundant.
Okay.
Okay. It's fine.
It's fine. So I take it, do you want to make that a motion?
I will make a motion that we approve the, what we have here, 2015-2, which does not include that extra step.
Okay, we have a motion for, to approve Resolution number 2015-02, adopting the rules of order. Is there a second?
A second.
Second from Heidi. Discussion?
I was just wondering, do we, do we want to note that it's Robert's Rules of Order or existing rules of order?
It, it has Robert's Rules in number six.
In number six.
Number six it does. Oh, jeez. Any other comments or hearing none, now call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries four in favor, none against. Resolution 2015-03, appointing council members to serve on various boards and commissions, and also making annual appointments.
Okay, we have the, I had the resolution in there, but I did not fill in the 2015 line because at the time of the packet going out, we didn't know, and actually, it was kind of hinging on whether Diane was going to be appointed or not. So now that we have that, Warren, do you want to present the ones you're suggesting, or I can read them? Usually, it's up to you.
I can do that.
Okay.
Okay. For 2015, my recommendation is as acting mayor, be Dave Thomas. City engineer will state Stan Tech. City attorney is Thomas Mayer. The HRA board liaison will be Dave Thomas. Park board will be Heidi Leach. Planning commission will be Diane Kelly. The EDA will be myself and Keith Johnson. Senior center liaison will be Dave Thomas. Airport commission, Keith Johnson. I know some of you are writing, but if I'm going too fast, let me know. CBB board would be Heidi. Policy and planning committee would be Heidi and Dave. Operations committee will be Keith Johnson and Diane Kelly. Personnel committee and finance committee will be myself and Dave Thomas. The official newspaper will be the Sauk Center Herald. Depositories will be Minnesota National Bank, First State Bank, Central Minnesota Credit Union, the 4M Fund, Morgan Stanley, Smith &amp; Barney, and multi-bank securities. Fire department, there wasn't any changes, they had their meeting last night, right? Fire chief, John Egan. First assistant, Steve Moritz. Second assistant, Ron Moritz. Secretary treasurer, Dave Moritz. Training and safety officer, Scott Kowski. Those are my recommendations. Does the council have any comments or positions that they would like to see changed during...
Right, I have one comment.
Okay.
You have Diane Kelly listed on the planning commission. She is already on the planning commission as a at-large board member.
Right, that will create a vacancy on that board. And so we'll have to fill that position.
Okay. We have the authority to remove her from that term? It's not up.
She would have to resign that term.
We would have to have her resign.
Because, because we've got, otherwise, we'd have two councilmen on there. So she'd resign that term and then accept this appointment.
Well, having two councilmen is probably not against the rules, since she's not there as a councilman now.
Yeah.
But she would have to resign.
She would have to resign that position to accept it as the council position.
To take the city council position.
And then that would make that position vacant that we would fill. So she's basically just, she's still on the board on the, with the same level of authority, it's just that she's now representing the council.
Okay. We'd have to run that by her then, she'll have to resign.
Right.
And she, she understands how that, she understands that.
Okay. Any other comments? Anybody else want to change anything, or are you happy with what, you know, I don't know what everybody's personal schedule is, if it's going to conflict with any. If it does, we can always change it later, you know? Hearing nothing, do I have a motion to approve Resolution number 2015-03 determining the annual appointments?
So moved.
We have a motion from Heidi, second from Keith. Any other discussion? Hearing none, call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion carries four in favor, none against. Resolution 2015-04, authorizing signatories.
As you know, the mayor of the city is an authorized signer for each of our three financial institutions. This is Minnesota National Bank, First State Bank, and Central Minnesota Credit Union. This resolution actually removes Brad and adds Warren as an official signer, along with Jacqueline and myself as the other two signers. Then we'll get this corporate authorization, then we take that to the bank, and that gives them authorization to change the signature cards. So that's Resolution 2015-04.
Any comments or questions? Pretty much a boilerplate thing that was done whenever the position changes. Hearing nothing, do I have a motion to approve Resolution 2014, nope, that should be 2015, right?
It should be.
2015-04 designating authorized signatures.
So moved.
We have a motion from Keith.
Second.
Second from Dave. Any other discussion or thoughts? Hearing none, call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion carries four in favor, none against. Moving on. Resolution 2015-05, authorizing reimbursement from borrowed funds.
With the city having two outstanding public improvement projects, one being Beltline Road and one being Center Street, there is a potential that we will be bonding money to pay for those projects in this coming year. And what this attached resolution authorizes us to do is to reimburse ourselves for costs incurred to date, like engineering costs and different things like that, that we incurred prior to issuing of the bonds when it laps over a calendar year. And so this resolution is an IRS regulation that the city council, you agree and understand that it would be our intent, if we bond, to reimburse ourselves, or to include in that bond, to reimburse ourselves for the costs we've incurred to date. And you thought the previous one was boilerplate, this is right out of the IRS code, so, but it is presented to you as Resolution 2015-05. It establishes procedures relating to compliance with reimbursement bond regulations under the Internal Revenue Code.
Questions?
No.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve Resolution 2015-05 establishing reimbursement guidelines?
So moved.
We have a motion from Keith.
Second.
Second from Heidi. Any other discussion or thoughts? Hearing none, call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion carries four in favor, none against. Item 7F, appoint firefighters.
Due to the resignations that we've had, if you recall, in the last couple months, we had two resignations from the fire department. We had two vacant positions, and according to the procedure, or the standard operating guidelines of the fire department in the city, members of the department reviewed the hiring list and recommend the following two candidates be appointed as firefighters. And I have in here upon completion of acceptable background review and pre-employment physical, but now both of those have already been completed. And also, they have already completed the firefighter one course, I believe they have firefighter two to go. The two candidates that are being recommended for appointment to the department are Jeff Peters and Michael Anderson.
Questions, comments? What kind of list do we have for available firefighters yet?
Now that we're appointing these, we're to the point now where sometime this year, we'll be looking to go out and reestablish the list again.
Okay.
Because we've hired from this list, I think, five.
Right. That's the reason why I was just wondering how many we had left that...
We don't.
Okay, sounds good. It's good that we got people that are willing to do this. With that, do we have a motion to approve the appointments of Jeff Peters and Michael Anderson to the Sauk Center Fire Department?
So moved.
Motion from Dave.
Second.
Second from Heidi. Any other questions or concerns? Not, call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion carries four in favor, none against. Moving on to unfinished business. Letter A, review condition compliance, Resolution 2013-88, Gasmart.
Okay, we have the Gasmart owner, Dan O'Brien. He provided answers to the city's review of his conditions on his new facility, which is up on the north end. And they were reviewed at the planning commission level in December. And I put in your packet the resolution that approved the project. I had sent a letter in October regarding our compliance review, basically to see, you know, to make sure he'd met all the conditions. And then his response back to me, which was sent to the planning commission for their review. They suggested that since the resolution is the city council, it should be the body to determine if all the conditions are met. However, their one, their one concern on that was on the stormwater, which is condition number three, and whether his response adequately addressed the condition. Now, the condition is that he would have plans for stormwater rate control and infiltration to be submitted to the city engineer for review. And we'd asked him to have his engineer submit those numbers of rate flow to our engineer to make sure that the pond he was proposing was going to adequately handle the stormwater, which is coming off the roofs of the buildings. And his answer to us that was basically that all drainage runs to that lot, and that he has a retention pond that is one foot, six inches deep, and 30 by 65 with a base of pure sand. And their excavator feels that this will handle any future rains once grass is in, is in, and that he is willing to make it deeper if it proves not to adequately address the water. And he does say about the entire roof of both stores, drain underground through a pipe and into this area. So it was like we were asking for rate control and volume numbers for engineer to review, and he, he had built a small pond, and he says, I believe it's enough, and my excavator believes it's enough, and I'll make it bigger if you need me to. So that was kind of what we were requesting and what he provided. And it really technically is a condition of the city council that he provide that data. And so we can't, as staff, say it's good enough, so to speak. So I wanted to bring it to the city council, you know, do you want us to continue to pursue it? You know, do you want to say, let's wait and see how it goes through a season? You know, we're open to what the council wants us to do with this condition.
I guess the only thing, he still has more work to do yet this spring, correct?
The work in the spring is just going to be to get the turf free established.
Yeah.
Yeah, the grass to grow.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll chime in here. Since I was, now I'm chairman of the planning commission, or was at the time this was done, we reviewed the plans and his letter of what, the reason why the planning commission was basically deciding to move this on to the council is because of this number three. He never officially handed us engineer documents telling us what the rate and flow was, which was part of his conditional use permit. One concern that I have right now is when you drive by there, if there is a retention pond there now, or what he calls a pond, it's also full of snow, because that's where he's pushing all this snow pile into. If we get a spring thaw and a mass of spring rain, that water's not going to go in that pond, because it's going to go around that, and we're going to cause more flooding problems in that area than what we had before. At the public hearing, when he was applying for his permit, most of the concerns we got were from the residents in that area concerning water runoff and what was going to be done about it. And personally, I don't think it's been met as far as, as far as an engineer's report and what more problems could be created.
I have to agree. We asked for the numbers to verify them, and we didn't get any of it. We got told, well, I put in a thing, and I think it's big enough, I'll make it bigger if I need to. And we'll get into a shouting match then, determining whether it's big enough or not. Yeah, I think we need to see the numbers still. They need to be verified.
The also, the other part that I was concerned about is there's an LP dispenser and, which meets all the state player codes and everything, and with the electrical inspector. But from what I understand, it also sits on city right-ofway for Linden Lane. I was wondering what liability issues could possibly be created with that situation, as far as the city allowing him to leave it there.
Yeah, I hate to get into a situation where we allow people to put their stuff on to the right-aways. That's just asking for trouble down the road. I mean, where does that stop?
So, those are my viewpoints. I don't know, has anyone else got any ideas or comments, or had a chance to drive by and look? Or, you know, we're here to not be the bad guy, but yet, we still have to have some form of order, in my opinion.
His letter says that he'd be able to move it, should any work need to be done in that area, but is there an area he can move it to regardless? Like, if we ask him, can he move it for the LP?
That's one of the questions that we're not sure, or I don't know unless Vicki knows of an answer to that.
Well, the LP, that wasn't part of the plan that the planning commission originally reviewed when, when it was put in, but it's, it's really considered personal property, and by reviewing it, you know, it's got to be 10 feet from the building. And his building is 10 feet from the right-ofway, so you kind of do the math, he's obviously in the right-ofway, we don't have a definite line of the right-ofway there after all the construction. I certainly can, you know, talk to him and ask him if he has an alternate location, and just find out from him what his plans would be if we asked him to move it. You know, it's, it's just somebody can go out there and fill an LP, like a barbecue grill LP tank, that type of fill system is what it is. And it's just on the north end of the building, and the way they graded and kind of have a retaining wall there, it just sits down there at the level of the garage, or level of the store, if any of you have seen it.
So it wasn't in the original plans?
No.
Was it in revised plans that we received?
No, but it's not a structure. You know, it's...
Okay, well, we have rules about people storing things in the right-ofway, don't we?
Uh, we don't generally allow it. That's one of the reasons this is on this letter.
Well, there you go. If it's personal property and it doesn't count, well, you can't store it on the right-ofway.
No, I can, I'll get back to him with that, if you want me to give him that feedback.
What is the council's wishes as far as the holding pond?
Holding the pond, I guess I'd like to see somewhat of an engineer's report on it, whether it be someone from him... whether it be someone from him or a city engineer telling us if it would be adequate, but...
He was supposed to provide the runoff calculations and then to us and to our engineer so our engineer could decide whether, determine whether the pond he was planning was adequate. So really what he needs to do is provide us with those numbers and we can go from there.
Yeah. That's my feeling.
And one of the issues is, is I'm not comfortable with our city engineer going up there telling him to do that because that's on, could possibly be our dollar. And I'm, I'm nice, but I'm not going to spend city money to do someone else this position.
I would tend to agree with that, however, I guess, you know, it's got to be verified by someone that knows what they're looking at.
Right.
Yeah, and that would be my stipulation.
Okay. Any other comments or suggestions? I think this is basically just for discussion to see whether or not we're going to okay the conditions. The planning commission was uncomfortable with the idea of okaying them, that's the reason why I came to the council since we do the final say. As of right now, his certificate of occupation is temporary, right?
Yes, he has a temporary certificate of occupancy until everything is met.
Right.
So I understand, I'll get back to him and ask him for the numbers again, that condition number three is not adequate. And then what do you, you want me to also address the propane and say, you know, that really can't be in the right of way?
I would, I personally would.
Is that the direction?
I would.
Okay, I will get back to him with those and of course I'll also invite him to come back to a future meeting and address the council in person.
Right.
All right.
Okay, is everybody comfortable with that?
Yeah, he has, he has permit to operate, doesn't have a sunset on it.
His certificate is temporary, is through March 31st.
Oh, okay.
So that'll give him time to come back to a council meeting.
Yep.
Okay, with that, we'll move on to eight B, set interview committee for public work supervisor.
We have the interviews set up for the fifteenth, which is next Thursday. And so the recommendation was the personnel committee, which now tonight we know who the personnel committee is. If, that would be Warren and Dave if you're both available that day. And that would be the fifteenth.
Fifteenth.
Fifteenth?
It's at Thursday.
Thursday.
Okay, that should be fine.
And then I will be in on that and we had recommended, we thought about having a PUC representative, but they're going to Sioux Falls for that, some meetings that day, so they won't be available. So we, you know, we could have the three of us do the interviews or we can find an at-large person, if anybody else you know of that would be interested in conducting those interviews and if so, get hold of myself or Nikki. She's helping set them up, so...
Didn't, didn't we have a, didn't we suggest a at-large person?
We did, and we just haven't been able to find somebody because in this kind of a position, it's like you find somebody and then oh, wait a minute, they were the reference for one of the people we're interviewing. So you really can't set that committee till after you know who you're interviewing because you'll end up with conflicts.
That's Sturges County thing.
Exactly.
Okay, so as of right now, it'd be Vicky, Dave and myself for July 15th at 12:30 is the first...
It's January.
January, what am I doing?
Getting ahead of yourself. Wishful thinking.
Way ahead of myself, yeah. January 15th at 12:30 was the first interview. That's going to work for you, Dave?
Yep.
Okay. All right, and it's free for me, I'm open. Has anyone got any ideas as far as an at-large person that we would like to see?
Otherwise, we have, we have some other ideas we've been kicking around, we'll see. And I'll get back with you, Warren.
Okay.
Both of you, I guess you're both personnel committee now.
Right, so... Okay, it's fine, general consent, that's okay. All right, then we will move on to eight C, Beltline Road update.
As you know, the Beltline Road project with the county is now in design and the storm position, the storm portion to be designed and completed by our engineer and merged into the county. And Keith is here to give you kind of an update of where we're at, what we can look at for timelines, et cetera, on that.
Mayor and council, Beltline project is moving along quite well at this point. We have all of our preliminary design complete and I can tell you that by and large, it's exactly what was in the preliminary design that you, that you have already seen previously. There's really no substantive changes to that at this point. I do have some drawings and instead of, I thought, instead of wasting the time of putting them up on the boards, if you'd like to stop after the meeting, I've got a couple of things I could show you of where the easements and things are at, laid out, so I'll just kind of hang around here and you can come and take a look at those after the meeting. But there are several parcels that we need easements on, but you were made aware of that previously. That really is the, kind of the next phase of where we're going. We'll be meeting with the county, I believe in the packet it said that we've met. We, I've met with the county once, but we'll be doing the, kind of that final check with the county, getting our plans together on Friday morning, actually. So we'll be doing that here very soon. And then we'll, you know, if everything looks good with them, then we'll start moving forward with acquiring easements and properties that are, that are required for that, so... But I'm happy to say everything worked out quite, quite well, pretty much exactly as was shown on the preliminary designs, pipe sizing and everything is, is all the same, so ponds are pretty much what I anticipated size-wise, so, and I'll show you those, but everything's pretty on track at this point, so, any questions?
Yeah, I've got one. On the corner of Getty and Beltline, I was just wondering, they're going to plan on straightening that curve so it's not quite so sharp? Are they doing all that within their right of way or are they also acquiring property or going through...
My understanding is, at this point, is that they're looking to acquire property. I would think they would need to, as I see it. I'll know more on Friday, but they haven't finalized that, I can tell you that much, but I don't see how they can't buy additional right of way. And I could show you that on the drawings I have here and kind of get you a nice sense of what that's going to be. The parcels that we need would be impacted by that because we don't necessarily need the whole easement if it becomes right of way for that pond in that corner, so...
Right.
So there's a little overlap there.
Okay. I just had a question on, our economic development group came up with, well, actually, we didn't come up with it, but we were wondering about an access road. Correct me, Vicky, it's on Beltline itself off of that?
Into the interpretive center property?
Yes, is that going to be...
That will be a discussion, it's been already and it will be a discussion topic on Friday. You know, there, I can tell you the county's current plan is to shut that off. We have already, myself and Vicky have said, that's not the desires of the city. But so far, we haven't seen their final stuff, so I think that'll kind of come together Friday and that certainly will be my intentions to tell them that that is not our intention for that to be closed off. You know, so we'll, we'll start to negotiate through that process, so expect, I would kind of expect that to come back to you here perhaps for some further discussion, maybe, maybe some sort of decisions, perhaps at our next meeting, so...
Okay, thank you. Any other comments, concerns? Okay, thank you, Keith.
No, I can't remember where we're here.
Center Street update.
Okay, the paving and reconstruction of Center Street, you recalled we had some meetings on that. It's actually been discussed since April of 2014 when we received a petition from all of the abiding property owners for pavement. Then we went into looking at what do we do about the stormwater, the stormwater issues up there kind of driving that. The council did vote to proceed with an urban design project up there versus a rural design. And then we had, the city engineer and myself, we met with Midwest Machinery regarding the storm outlet that was extended by them out west past their property. If you recall, we have a stormwater line that ended at their property line before they owned that property and it discharged. Then when they acquired the property and built their display area, they extended that pipe and built their parking. So our project would have to enlarge that pipe or do something different there over their property and we'd have to obtain an easement for that. We also looked at, or Keith looked at, doing a, like a lineal pond area between Fleet and Midwest Machinery that the water would collect in and then drain out through that existing pipe under Midwest so that, that size pipe that's there could handle it. And he kind of has some estimates of, the cost estimates of doing it either way, and I believe you said it came out about the same. So after we had that visit with them, you know, we've talked with the owners and the other thing with Midwest Machinery, you know, they kind of liked the urban design because it was wider. But then when we were on site with them, we showed them exactly what a rural design would be, which is about almost wider than the existing road is now. So he kind of changed his mind thinking maybe rural design is fine then because it is wide, wider than he envisioned when we were at the meeting. So a couple of things have changed on that end. We have had people asking us, you know, what are we planning to do there? We have that corner that the county is going to be fixing, extending that culvert. So this project is kind of tied to Beltline, but as for our purposes, it's two different decisions and two different projects. So Keith is going to update you on where we are and get some, some direction from you. Do we want to continue to proceed with this project? Do we want to start wrapping up some numbers? Do we want to revisit with the owners or how do you see us proceeding with it? So I'll let Keith talk to you a little bit about, you know, some of the engineering side of it.
Well, I think he stole most, most of my thunder, but, yeah, in terms of, we looked at that, that pond versus the piping through there and it's, we might save a little bit of money. We actually can make a pond working through there, but we'll do, have to do some excavation, we'll have to acquire some drainage easements. Pipe-wise, we'd save probably about forty thousand dollars in project costs, but we'll eat some of that back up again by, by easements and some, so there won't be significant savings, but we'd probably see some if we went with that approach versus the other. And either way frankly can work. I think that can be a design detail that once, if you, if you choose to move forward, we can work with the landowners and see what might work out to go through there, but, but don't expect significant savings by going that route. We can use their existing pipes that cross Midwest by doing that route. So there's some, there's some benefits by not having to tear through their, their parking lot, you know, there, where they have all their, their product there displayed, so there are some intangible type benefits that way, so, so it might be worthwhile. The county is planning to open up that culvert that's at Beltline and, and Center Street, it's on the east side of that intersection, so therefore there will be more water coming through there. That is what our plan is, is assuming that as well, so we don't have that drainage shed that currently just kind of sits there and probably ultimately backs up and goes to the east. We do not have that water included in our current plan on Beltline because the county does plan on opening that up, one way, shape or form. So just so the council's really aware of that. I think Vicky pretty well covered most other, most other things, so if you have any questions for me.
If the council proceeds with this, what kind of timeline are we going to have here as far as being able to get numbers together and go out to bids and...
Well, we could, we could move quite rapidly. We've got all of the topography, everything's done. We could move into design, you know, virtually right away. The lingering issues that always take a little time and you can never quite tell how long it'll take would be easements and some negotiation with, with the property owners and that, but that would be it. The biggest issue here is that, that stormwater going out through Midwest Machine and the issue of the private pipe and public water and those kind of things we have to work through. But, you know, I think that's something that Vicky and I can tackle with the, with the landowner and go through it. But I see that as probably the unknown in terms of timing, but otherwise it could be moved forward and get to bid, you know, for the summer without really any problems.
Okay, and as far as the easements for the pond, we're probably going to need that anyway if we did go out.
Well, we'd need some temporary easements, at least to do the piping through there. We do have an easement through there now, but it's quite narrow, it wouldn't be enough to do the work, so we would need at least a temporary easement. The largest drainage easement would actually be on the north side, on Fleet Side where we'd need a little more drainage. We might not even need hardly anything on the south side for the ponding scenario, but, but some temporary easements, construction easements would be required through there.
Okay, you know, we first originally got the numbers, if I see right, back in May of 2014. Are we anticipating a huge change in those numbers if we go out now?
It's been about, you know, this last year, things went up about, it was between two and a half to three percent. That's pretty typical, we see about that same every year. It ranges between two to three percent typically for increases. So it's not huge, but you do see an increase every, every single year, cost of materials go up. Frankly, it's mostly materials, labor tends to be, at least it has been recently fairly stable, but, but the material costs are going up, you know, cement in particular. A lot of, some of this is concrete pipe, if, you know, in the urban design, we have concrete, curb and gutter and cement's getting very hard to get.
Okay. Anyone else have any questions or concerns to ask Keith? I don't have any more for you. Thank you. I just got one question for Vicky. If we proceed with this project, are, is, I'm sure we're going to have to maybe do some type of bonding or for financing ours, the city share?
Probably.
Is there any way we can tie it in with our costs for Beltline?
I guess when I was sitting there, listening to you talk about that, you know, we have some funding for Beltline, but we will have to acquire other funding and it would be more cost effective for us to combine the two, you know, because to bond for a small amount of money, you know, there's bonding costs that you're not going to, you can spread it over more. So I would recommend if we do go forward with this, that we look at, you know, going away from a street reconstruction and going to a special assessment type bond because as a whole, we'll be assessing more than the required minimum and probably get a better interest rate doing it that way. But I can look at those numbers each way and I would do that if we decide to go forward. I'd come back with the best, the best deal hopefully for the city and, and also to do it legally. I mean, it's really, bonding gets to be kind of complicated depending on how you spend the money and whether it's assessed and whether you have capital improvement plans and there's all kinds of criteria, but we financed the last one and made it through it, so I think we can do this one and actually combining them together would be a benefit.
Okay. Anyone got any questions or concerns or what are their wishes? Is this something that you think the council should proceed with and direct the city engineer to finalize the estimates on this project?
I think we'd continue.
I, I do as well.
Okay.
Are you wishing to continue on the urban plan or on the rural? Or does it need to, does that decision need to be made right now?
Well, the city council has already made a decision...
As the urban?
To go with the urban.
Even after discussing with property owners and their choice? I mean, it's saving, it's, I think it's a cost savings all the way down for them?
Right. That's one of my next questions is if we do proceed with this, does the council want to go back to the property owners and talk to them again? We've talked to them once, they did petition, we've talked to them once, but I don't know if anything's going to change. I guess it's up to the council.
They want the cheap one.
Yeah, they want the cheap one.
Of course.
But...
Does the cheap one alleviate their, their, their issues with that road? What, what was the benefits? I guess I wasn't in on the discussions of the benefits to the urban.
The benefit is, as far as from what, if I remember right, the reason why we went with the urban because of the curbed, the tar, the curb and you actually have designated turnoffs going into their driveways where if you just go with the urban and it was no concrete and it was just tar, if the semis cut the corner a little bit, the trailers come around, they're going to break that tar down and the shoulders break down. And I think it was more a concern that if we're going to repair a street, we don't want that, the edges broke down and the curb would be more definite. It does cost more money to put that concrete in, but in a way, it, I think it prolongs the life of the road. So...
I think it prolongs the life of the road and it's actually easier to repair in the event it does have to be repaired because you got, you can delineate, it's definite borders, so to speak, so...
The part of the situation there too is with the storms water runoff, the culverts are half closed and filled up with dirt now and a lot of it is because everybody that took the corner cut it, you know, or a tree, you know, and they eventually got the road not even where it's supposed to be because eventually it just keeps getting filled out and it gets wider. Where with the curb, they don't want to jump those truck tires over a curb anymore than... than we'd like to.
No, it's not gonna wash out as well.
Right, and it's not gonna wash out. And I think that was another reason why we were looking at going with the urban is to save our culverts on the end because they can't be broke down by dropping trailers in them.
Yep.
Okay.
Does that answer your questions on how we got to the urban?
And that was originally what the landowners had preferred? Well.
I think it was about fifty-fifty.
Yeah, the re, the one resident in the residential or in the, his personal resident wanted curb and gutter. Um, and I think CPS didn't really care. They just wanted something done and, um, I think Midwest kinda.
Mid, Midwest had gone with urban based on the width, but then when we met with them on pers, on-site and explain, and showed them how wide the rural would be, then they kinda switched their opinion to rural.
To rural?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, we kinda have a Duke's mixture, you know? We could meet with them again. I mean, that's not a problem. Or if you guys feel strongly with urban, we can go that way.
Well, they, they liked the rural one because it wasn't as wide. Is that right? The urban one looked wider than they anticipated.
The pavement's not as wide, right?
The pavement width and the shoulders is the same.
Yeah.
Yeah. You have, yeah, you have a thicker.
The pavement is the same, but you don't have the curb and gutter and water control.
No, the width, the rural width is the same. Edge gravel, edge gravel, but then with this four-foot gravel.
Right, yeah, that's what, that's what I mean. It was.
The pavement's actually.
It's not, yeah. Which just tells me there's gonna be trucks in the gravel.
Right. And.
Does anybody else have any talk of a precedent to for future?
Yep.
Yep.
Gravel projects?
Part of the city plan is that we, in the next couple, two or three years, any road that's gravel, we were going to plan on getting tarred so we wouldn't have that maintenance issue. So, to me, if we put this aside and wait till then, we're just gonna increase the cost because we've already been told it's increasing two and a half to three percent. Um, they did petition for it. I don't know if it's gonna change anything as far as which way they want the road. Um, I guess I'm looking for suggestions. I think we pretty much made up our mind. We wanna go ahead with this, but we need to know if we want staff to meet with the property owners again.
What, what decisions or, or what, what would be changed by meeting with the property owners? Just whether or not, if we table this, this today?
I'm not certain there would be anything unless.
We were gonna meet with, we, when we met with them last time and we came to the city council and then we went out, we had not yet met with about that drainage that goes out across Midwest, Midwest. We hadn't had those conversations yet and he had not yet looked at whether a ponding option was an option. So, there was kinda some business that wasn't completed or that came up at the meeting that then we decided to go do. We haven't got back with the property owners yet. I don't know that it's gonna change numbers or anything. It just kind of answers the questions that were raised. You know, we can certainly do that in letter format. We can explain where we're at with the project or we can bring them together and talk to them. It doesn't.
But regardless, you, like you said, word, city plan is to eventually get all roads paved, so if they're approaching us now, may as well get it done, cause it'll eventually just get done.
Right. Okay.
I guess I, yeah, I, I, I'd like to probably approach the landowners, but, uh, probably express our desire for a urban situat, or urban style.
And they're, they're aware that the council voted that way to go with the urban after we had the meeting, so.
Yeah, I think, you know, to send them a letter, it's nice to be kept informed.
Okay.
It's back on, it's back on the burner again, so.
Okay, I'll do that.
Okay. Uh, you wanna motion to?
I, I don't need no motion.
To determine the parameters? No?
No, we're good.
Okay. All right. With that, we'll be moving on to new business. Request for use of former ambulance garage.
Uh, we have in your packet, you had a letter from the senior center board, signed by the president and vice president of the SOX Center, senior center, and, uh, they have requested to utilize the meeting space at the former ambulance garage. Not the garage space, but the meeting space. And there's a meeting room, a bathroom, and a couple little small offices if you've ever been in that space. Um, they had articulated a couple uses or a few uses. The most important, of course, is the use for the public health nurse. The public health nurse comes to the senior center and meets with seniors and with HIPAA, et cetera. They're starting to get, um, requirements where they have to have the privacy, not only for the person they're working with, but the people that are waiting to see them. And so, they're running into that. In fact, I got a letter actually today from, uh, that county, of this, from Stearns County talking about going forward to address, uh, keeping healthcare information private, that there's gonna be some changes in how Stearns County does it and the sites that they're gonna be able to go to provide, to provide these services based on the facility they have. Um, they also are requesting that, uh, a little more privacy for tax preparation. If you know, like February, March, and the first part of April, volunteers come in and do tax prep for seniors and there really isn't a breakout space for that. Um, they would like additional space for groups and events, cause some of them get quite large. You may have the quilters in there and the men's card playing there and several activities going on at the same time. And then also, of course, there's always that confidentiality with the staff. I mean, the staff is there and people come and talk to you and they wanna have a little privacy and, and so those are all just kinda some reasons why the senior center board is articulating why they would like to be able to utilize that space. And if you've been up there or not aware, there's actually a door from the senior center that goes into the garage and then the meeting space is off the garage. So, they recognize that if we give them that space or allow them to use that space, we'll probably have to build some kind of a hallway through there to give them, to give them that space that separates it from the garage, so it has like firewall, that type of thing, which won't be a big problem, but there would be a small cost involved in that. So, then also, the city council has not discussed formally what we're gonna do with that building now that the ambulance garage has moved out, but we have talked about maybe police impound. We've talked about public works vehicles. Um, we've talked about renting it out. Um, we've had several options of what, what's a good use for that space. The problem with the meeting space is you only get to it through the garage. So, that's always been a problem when you think if someone wants to use the facility, well, they need to go through the garage to get into it if they were gonna rent, if we say we were gonna rent that side out. So, it has some problems, not that aren't, that we couldn't overcome, but I brought this to the council now because the senior center board has formally requested to be allowed to use it, so. So, now it's up to you.
Comments? Concerns? Um, considering there is, only one way is through the garage and there is possibility of having to build a hallway to gain access to those meeting rooms, which would cut down on the garage space. Um, I'm willing to maybe see if the council wants to just send us to operations and take a walkthrough and look at different ideas of it. And see what kind of expenses we're gonna, we're gonna have to incur as far as building a hallway and making sure that it's accessible safely. I don't know if there's a lip, you know, or s, I haven't been up there for a little while, so I'm not certain if there's a lip going from the door, through the doorway into that garage area. That could be a trip factor or anything like that, um, that we'd have to look at. So, I would.
I believe there's a threshold on the door between the ambulance garage and the senior center.
But is there a step down after that?
No, I don't believe there's a step down. It's just flat in.
Yeah, it's pretty level.
It's built on a slab.
It's, it's cement on one side and it's carpeted on the other, so.
Right.
We have about that much of a shift.
Right. So, I was just, my recommendation would be to go to the op, have operations, do a walkthrough, look at it and come back with a, I don't know, a better idea as far as what we're getting into here. I don't, I'm not against the idea. I just think there's a few variables out there that need to be thought through rather than.
I think it's, it's worth looking at the layout there. I mean, at this point, there's three bathrooms now in that facility. And I wonder if it's possible to gain access to that room without going through the garage if you don't have to have another bathroom.
True.
Well, you have the utility room then.
Yeah, there's a little utility room right there too.
I had, the public works staff did go up and look at that, um, just to kinda get an idea of, of how complex the idea of building a hallway would be, which really would just be straight off the one door. It'd be like probably four foot wide by however many feet long. It wouldn't be too complicated, but, um, we did look, we did talk about the idea of going straight through and not having to go into the garage portion, but you'd have to go, you have the utility room there, so how that would, and then the other bathroom is behind the bathrooms that we have, so we'd have to go through a bathroom, so that's probably not.
Well, you'd end up taking the one bathroom out.
Yeah, so.
I don't know. I, I, I guess I'd like to look at it because, you know, they've given us two examples what it could be used for. There's probably other things it could be used for as well, you know, that, that space if it were to be made available, so. I, I didn't, I, I wouldn't mind looking at it.
Okay. And I'm sure.
So, operations it is?
However, I.
Okay.
I do not, I do not think it'll be early, er, ready as early as Wednesday, the twenty-first though.
Uh, that, that's just the next day that the public health nurse is coming?
Yeah.
That wouldn't, uh, disallow the public health nurse from coming based on their, their HIPAA exclusions currently?
Yeah.
Well, I, I think not, not, not yet.
Okay.
But, um, what are we using the garage for now? Are they stored vehicles in it?
Uh, right now, we have a police impound vehicle, one vehicle in there.
We have one impound vehicle, okay.
And we had moved that out of the transit garage.
Yeah.
So, cause we had to put our public works vehicle up there, the one that has to go inside in the winter, which that could actually be in this garage. And we talked about if the public works use this garage instead of our three stalls at the transit, we could probably rent a couple of those transit stalls out to the transit company, to TriCap.
Yeah.
You know, so there's alternatives.
If we get access for the public nurse on a temporary basis, just.
Yeah. And they just, what the public health nurse said, beginning in early two thousand fifteen, we're gonna be looking at those issues. So, I'm not, I don't know that January twenty-first, that we're not coming because you haven't resolved them yet, yeah.
Right. Well, do I have general consent then that this could move to operations?
I think so, but I think we should probably look at it sooner than later, so. Sometime this month if possible.
Sure.
And one of the things is with the committees, if I remember right, at one point, the council had stated that if at all possible, anytime it goes to a committee, that we'd like to have a result or a report back within thirty days after the council sends it. We try to abide by that, but sometimes timelines and people's lives change those things a little bit, so I don't, unless there's a problem with you or Diane getting together on that, I don't see a problem with it. Okay? So, I think we go on to, uh. Uh, nine B, snow blower replacement?
Uh, yeah, just put that on there, just to kinda bring that back up. It's been kind of, it operates sporadically because we have that big diesel-powered snowblower that goes on front of the loader that we load the trucks with. We blow snow back at the airport. It is a nineteen eighty-nine and, uh, it has been costing us significant dollars to keep it working and so we did put it on the capital improvement plan, but in two thousand fifteen, we'd be looking at replacing that struck, that piece of equipment. And, uh, it's come now recently with more repairs imminent, so I had the public works staff, uh, update the quotes that we had received for replacement. I just wanna take those to operations. I just wanted the council to know that, that's back on the table again, um, sooner maybe a little bit than we thought it would be, but it may save us dollars by looking at it now rather than later, so.
Maybe we could visit that same time.
Same time.
Yeah.
So.
I think operations has looked at this a couple times already.
Yeah, I remember.
Dave and I.
Yeah, you, you, you did when you were on operations and we did recommend to go forward with looking at the replacement and we thought it would be something that would happen in two thousand fifteen and maybe sixteen. We weren't sure. We looked at other options of hiring it out and other kinds of equipment that they had brought forward, but now I'm, we're kinda back to a very similar piece of equipment than they have right now, so.
Okay.
Okay. I guess the only question is, does it need to go to operations again? I mean, is it that different or is it, you know, pretty much Keith's gonna look at the same stuff he looked at before?
Um, equipment a little bit different, but not much. You know, I certainly can just, um, bring it back here.
Price is different, I suppose.
Oh, the price is always different.
Yeah.
And if I'm, if I'm meeting with them anyway, I can bring it up to them, otherwise I can just bring it back at the next council for you to look at closer.
It's easy enough if you're meeting. Does it need to go to finance too?
Probably. Yeah.
Maybe instead of operations.
That's the big part.
So, why don't we say it's going to finance, but feel free to inform the operations committee when you see them.
Okay, I'll do that instead.
Yep.
All right.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, moving on. We're down to the consent agenda. We have the schedule of claims, unpaid claims of a hundred and five thousand, six hundred and sixty-seven dollars and twenty-four cents, paid claims of four ninety-nine thirty-seven and paid claims, uh, December thirty-first of forty-four thousand, nine hundred and ninety-eight dollars and ninety-three cents for a total of hundred and fifty-one thousand, one sixty-five fifty-four. December checks, number two thirty-eight six E to number two forty-two three E and number zero three five eight three two to zero three five nine eight one with five payroll ACH transfers for a total of one million, four hundred and twenty-five thousand, six hundred and thirty-five eighteen. We have the list of checks. We've got a resolution, number two thousand fifteen dash oh-six, resolution accepting contributions, which was two hundred and thirty-three dollars from the men's card playing group wanting it to be allocated to the senior center, forty-one thousand dollars from the fire relief association for the fire department, two thousand five hundred dollars from the SOX Center youth hockey for the arena, another seventeen thousand, two hundred and seventy-five dollars from the SOX Center youth hockey for the arena, a hundred and fifty dollars for Marion Manning toward the ambulance and fifty dollars for Randy and Patricia Turner for the police for the K-9 unit. Um, in addition, Walmart Foundation donated fifteen hundred dollars to shop with a cop on behalf of the SOX Center Police Department. And I would like to, as representing the council, like to, uh, thank everyone for their contributions and a contribution list for the year of two thousand fourteen will be published in the Herald on the fifteenth of January. Uh, we also have a gambling application, for example, permit request from the Eagles Healing Nest for a raffle on April twenty-fifth, two thousand fifteen at the Eagles Healing Nest. And also the one item added, the police have excess vehicles and equipment to be offered for sale, for public sale. It's a nineteen ninety-three Plymouth Acclaim and that resolution is two thousand fifteen dash zero seven declaring property as excess and authorizing sale. Is there anything I missed or?
Nope, it's good.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
And a motion from Heidi. Second?
Second.
Second from Dave. Any questions? Discussion? Hearing none, call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Motion carries four in favor, none against. We have no informational items. So, with that, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
A motion from Dave.
Second.